Welcome, everybody. We do have a few members of our audience. Let me switch over. Si necesita traducción en español. Por favor, I know we need to do roll call first. I'm getting ahead of myself, sorry.
Trustee Marcus. Trustee Weekly.
Present.
Trustee Michael Boy.
Present.
Vice President Walsh.
Here.
President Lawson.
Here. Si necesita traducción en español, por favor llama al nueve siete ocho nueve nueve cero cinco uno tres siete y presione ocho tres siete siete cero cuatro uno el signo de número para la contraseña. The public is encouraged to speak to the board on issues of concern, whether or not the issue is on the agenda. To address the board, please complete the speaker's card online. It's attached to the Google Doc is attached to the agenda online. Okay. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
I do. I want to move. Measure you dispersment to action item. It will be number seven point four.
Any other changes? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Let's see, it looks like we still don't have any speaker cards. Okay. So that brings us to six point one. Public hearing and discussion. Wait, are we doing? The LCAP first?
We are doing the LCAP first.
Public hearing and discussion of the local control accountability plan. So we will go ahead and open the public hearing.
Okay, perfect. So Ms. Herrera, I'm going to turn this portion of the hearing over to you regarding the LCAP.
It's right on my desktop. See if that's, yeah. All right. Well, good evening, everyone. This is our public area for our local control accountability plan. I just want to hope you enjoyed reading the LCAP as much as I enjoyed writing it and learning about all the new all the new, there's definitely some differences from last year and learning. So I do want to say thank you to all of the team at services who help and some of the documentation, especially in the planning of the LCAP as well, as well as all of our advisory committee. Really did appreciate everyone's input. So as you know, this is our local control. This is a new cycle of a three-year plan. And so our LCAP, as we all know, has provides our goals, provides our goals that were then we have to create actions that then we add our budget items to it. We are must hold itself accountable to any reds on the California school dashboard. And as you know, we continue with that at schools to support the SIPSA plans who also have to address those red dashboards. So we revise the LCAP every year and we adjust our actions and priorities. So we will be doing that in the next, next spring. So just because these are some of our adoption requirements that we must hold this meeting, public hearing to solicit any recommendations from the public. At the same time, we're required to go over our budget overview for our parents, which Rick will do. And then next week, we are hoping to be able to adopt our 24, 25 LCAP federal as well as add our federal dentum next, next week, our budget and the budget overview of our parents. So as you know, we had our LCAP advisory committee timeline. We, I met with both our English-speaking families and our Spanish-speaking families. We had a total of six meetings in total on these advisory committees. We had board members, teachers, parents, LCAP, I mean ELAC parents, DLEC parents. We had our union representatives as well as some county supports from Selpa and some district directors who all help lead the advisory. Going to go into our highlights of the 2023-24 school year, which we have been going over and view over the, over the course of the school year. So for our 2324 annual review, this is part of our annual, we could see where we are and where we fall. As we know that the, on the area of our SARC, we are at seventy-one point eighty-two percent. We did have a number of international teachers come and help support as well of new teachers. As, so we're hoping next year we are fully staffed, almost fully staffed. So we are hoping to be able to continue to reach a hundred percent. So for our 2324 goal number one, as we look at what our goal was, was to look at our chronic absenteeism, we did have good results from 2324. Although we didn't meet our five percent goal, we did reduce it from twenty-four point seven to eighteen point nine. And even our, all of our subgroups were reduced. For our attendance rate, our R C S D, we increased our attendance rate from ninety-two to ninety-three point seven. Again, all of our subgroups were also increased. Our goal was ninety-seven percent. So we did not meet that in the three-year cycle. For suspension rates, we had a reduction of suspensions from three point two to one point seven overall. Most, all of our subgroups had decreased and our goal was to be one percent. Again, we did not, not meet this goal in the three-year cycle that when it was started and proposed. And so for our panorama survey, when we're looking at our climate and how our students are doing, we looked at our third through fifth grade. We seen that sixty-two percent of our students stayed the same in terms of the beginning of the fall and winter, in terms of how they felt they were belonging. In school climate, fifty-eight percent stayed the same. In terms of engagement, we had forty-eight percent. We were down one percent from the fall. And in terms of safety, we were down one percent from sixty-one. For our student-teacher relationships, we had seventy percent. We were just down two. So not very much change in three to five. In sixth through the eighth grade and our school belonging, we had thirty-four percent and it went down to one. And the climate, forty-one percent went down to two percent. In school engagement, twenty-four went down to one percent. And our safety, that stayed the same at fifty-one. And our student-teacher relationships was forty-two percent went down by two. So not much change from the fall to the spring in terms of our panoramic survey and what our students felt about school. So these are areas in which we have found about what is, you know, we're doing two surveys and not very much difference, very similar to the past years. So in terms of our LCAP, we still are not, do not have our full LCAP results. I believe the last Jenny had checked before last week, we were about eighty percent. So we still don't have our year three outcome of what that score is. Nor do we have our English indicator. We do have, we know that we have reclassified one hundred and sixty-seven students. We have reclassified a little bit more. Especially specifically, one of the focuses that Ms. Rera was trying to reclassify our eighth graders before they left because we did get some good results. And was doing some of that. So I don't have that current number because it went in the process still. And so our rate, we were at, we were at nine percent and we didn't reach our goal of twenty percent rate for that three-year cycle. So some of the highlights for 2023-24 is we did add supplemental curriculum for English, for language power. All training was provided for all the schools from K eight. Our middle school actually started a little earlier at the beginning of the year. We had our newcomers, teachers also getting trained. We received training from teachers creative materials to help support students as we had many staff members learning new strategies on how to support our students. We provided financial support to our unduplicated pupils at various sites. We initially only had some specific sites, but because we did have a large amount of families, we want to make sure all families attended. So we supported as many students as possible. In terms of our by literacy recognition, we had twenty-eight eighth graders who got recognized. Spanish and Mandarin this year at the eighth grade ceremonies. And as you said earlier, I had about one hundred and sixty-nine students. And so Catherine is still needing to update that number. In terms of GO three, I realized I did not add the data from GO three on here. So I'm going to just go over it really quickly. In terms of our CAS reading scores, we were in June, we were at forty-four point seven percent of students who were proficient or advanced. And for our English learners and language arts, we were only at five percent though. And so for our FIP students, we were at forty-nine percent. If our, for our socio-economically disadvantaged, we were at fifteen point six percent. And then for students with disabilities were at sixteen. Again, that was our reading. We did not meet our goals in the three-year cycle of seventy-five percent, which was overall. In terms of our math, our preliminary results show that we're at thirty-seven percent of students who just went blank on me. Thirty-seven percent of students who exceeded or met or exceeded, but our English learners are at seven percent. Our RFIP was twenty-eight point seven and our socio-economically disadvantaged at sixteen point eight and students with disability at thirteen point five. Again, our goal was about seventy-five percent overall, which we did not meet in that three-year cycle. And so as we had seen already previously in I Ready, we knew that in I Ready, we had seen previously earlier that we had not met that goal either. So in terms of our goals and looking at our sciences, so we also had a science and science is going to be on the dashboard in a couple of years as well, in two years. So we went, we're at thirty-four percent of our students have met or exceeded. In fifth grade and in eighth grade, we had twenty-eight point five. So a little bit more down from the previous year. Again, these are all our preliminary. But some of the highlights in terms of our data, although we didn't meet, we did do, we had a number of new initiatives, as you know, our K five staff. We learned how new assessment BPST, we had our second and third grade classes as well using Hagrid foundational skills. We had the new curriculum, the illustrative math. And our K eight, we had our language power. We had our special education teachers as well, using multiple professional development for them throughout the year. They had new foundational skills curriculum, SIPs, and they also had six, sixth to eighth grade had read one eighty. So we had a number of new curriculums this year that really provided our teachers with the ability to learn new skills and provide more supports for our students. Although we didn't meet the goals, there is a lot of work that's being done. As you know, the majority of all of our schools had steam teachers this year, as well as music and the middle schools at Clifford had, and middle school students at Clifford had accelerated math and that will continue. Our reading intervention teachers, all of them use SIPs curriculum for foundational skills that was purchased. Third through fifth grade use UFLI for an intervention to support students who had not mastered some foundational skills. And so we also had tutoring. We had forty teachers tutoring their own students throughout the year. We had CAP tutoring. It was at six sites this year and the majority of students made growth in either ELA and math and moving those levels on I Ready. So in our new goals. So now in recap of our new goals, as all of you have seen this, we have our goals for mostly about social emotional support at the, as a broad goal. So we have our two main goals of chronic absenteeism and suspensions. We want to be able for our chronic absenteeism in a year, we want to be able to, by two thousand and twenty-seven, we want to decrease three percent each year. Specifically, we need to focus in on African-American students as they're one of our target groups that are in red. And our English learners that are specifically at Clifford and Henry Ford. So we are, those are target schools that we have to address. And for suspensions, we want to be able to improve by reducing two percent each year. Specifically, again, one of our dashboard subgroups is African-Americans and our students with disabilities, socio-economically disadvantaged and English learners. So those are areas, areas in which we need to reduce in the next three years. So this is our baseline. I know they're super small, but we're starting off in our attendance rate currently as a district, we're at ninety-three point seven percent. English learners are at ninety-two point three. And now we are adding our long-term English learners because it's a new group subgroup of English learners. And they are ninety-three point four. We have our homeless that are ninety-one point six, our foster youth are ninety point four. Socio, socio-economically disadvantaged at ninety-three and our social disabilities at ninety-two point one and our African-Americans are at ninety-one point seven. So as you can see, we're a long way away from reaching ninety-seven percent, which is our state goal, right? That's where we want to be, but we have a long ways to go. We've made improvements. But definitely a lot of work. For our chronic absenteeism, very similar, but as a district-wide, we have about eighteen point nine percent of our students are chronically absent. The majority of those, as you look at this, we have our English learners at twenty-six point six, our long-term English learners at twenty point five, our homeless at thirty point four, foster thirty-three point three, our socio-economically disadvantaged at twenty-three point eight and twenty-six percent for students with disabilities. And as you can see, our highest is our African-Americans at thirty-five percent. So this is one of our areas to work on. In terms of suspensions, again, we need to make sure, oops, sorry. Not sure why this coming out there. And we, as a overall on our district, and I think something is covering that number. I will have to, it's probably on our LCAP. But our largest number in terms of suspensions again is a long-term English learners at five point six percent. And our African-Americans at five percent. So we have a lot of work to do in terms of suspensions and working with our students. And so in terms of our panorama, as we just stated earlier, you have seen those, that's our baseline for the starting year. We are lucky we have no expulsion rates and now we also have to add a middle school dropout rate. And so if you look at our middle school dropout, we have zero percent right now. That means students who have gone on to high school and that are currently. So that's a new area that we have to add this year. So these are the areas, schools in which we need to work with in terms of high absenteeism, in terms of their SIPSAs and in terms of the LCAP. So you can see we have a lot of schools on this for, in terms of chronic absenteeism for our English learners, our students with disabilities, our socio-economically disadvantaged, we have students who have right and two or more races. So we have a number of schools in which we need to work with to improve. And for suspensions, again, same groups, subgroups, English learners, students with disability, Hispanic and African-Americans. So there is a number of suspensions we need to work and to reduce at all of these sites. So what are we doing for twenty-four, twenty-five? So we're going to be continuing with PBIS. We have a new cohort of group of, of schools that are coming on. We have three that stay on and three that are coming on as new. It's a two-year cycle. We're going to be continuing to outreach to our families for, that are experiencing chronic absenteeism, specifically our unduplicated pupils. We continue to support our community schools with background services. We are going to continue with mental health. We're continuing with class-based behavior supports and opportunity school as an alternative to suspensions. Our homeless students, we want to continue to focus on them and we're continuing to build out our MTSS system that's monitoring all of what we're doing in order to improve as well as provide behavior specialists, which we've done. So some of the new actions for us in this new year are, we will be having, I believe I, I put three here, but I think there's two schools that we follow, new SCL curriculum, Wayfinder. We also have a grant that will be providing some supports for trauma-based training for, for these specific schools, Kennedy Hoover and Garfield and Taft. So they will be undergoing some trauma-based with Ms. Miss Griffin. We also have added thrive counselors who are working with some of our homeless families to really find, support them in finding resources. Again, that's through a grant. We have our new monitoring system for MTSS. We had EduClimber, so we're now moving on to Power Score Analytics. And we, for our behavior specialist, we used to have two, we're moving down to one next year and some B T's. So for goal number two, this again is our English learners. Our goal is that by twenty twenty-seven, that we'll have fifty percent of our second to eighth grade English learners will progress at least one level and more on the LCAP each year as measured by LCAP. We want to increase our reclassification rate by twenty percent and we want to decrease our L, LTS by ten percent. So again, we have schools that are highlighted with our subgroups of English learners in which we need to make sure we are supporting our Clifford, Garfield, Hoover, Roosevelt and Henry Ford. So again, we don't have the results yet from all of the LCAP. These are just tentative scores. We were still, this was only at eighty-two percent, the thirty percent, thirty-two percent of our ELs progressing at least one level. So you could see that there's still some work to be done. That was in twenty-two, twenty-three, sorry. And May twenty-four, May twenty twenty-four, we had forty percent. So we've had some growth there. Our RFIP rate went to nine percent. Our LTS are at twenty-seven percent. And then we had our panorama survey with our families as well. So this is a new area in which we need to report on. We have to have a family survey information as to how our families are feeling about our schools. So you can see here for, we had a one thousand ninety-eight families respond, about seventy percent of our population. We had seventy-seven percent favorable academic care as well as school safety. We had seventy-six percent favorable school climate, fifty-eight percent of cultural awareness and our lowest was twenty-five percent of family engagement. So an area again to work on. So for twenty-four, twenty-five, we want to continue the following actions we had in twenty-three, twenty-four, which continuing our academic planning for success. Looking at how we're bridging our families to high school. We're going to continue with supporting our families with outreach with Spanish-speaking families. We're providing them additional supports through various means, through homelessness, through all of them. However, they're unduplicated because they fall into different areas. We want to make sure we're continuing to with our newcomer student support systems, just in a different way at specific schools. And then we're really trying to work with our sped department on the duly identified students. And we're continuing to program monitor through our elevation. So one of the actions that we're doing next year is a lot of professional development around English learners and multilingual learners. So we have a series of PD that will be coaching at specific school sites. So our professional development will be a coaching series, which is also part of GO three in which we have, we're partnering with Stanford's six to eighth graders. And then we have TCM, which is partnered with third through fifth grade. And then we have them also working at our ATS I schools and CSI with the coaching for English learners. For goal three, our goal is that by twenty twenty-seven, we want to move, in I Ready, we want to have our students be at four percent each year so that they can either exceed growth in ELA and math. But for our CAS data, we want to make sure our English learners are meeting exceeding in the LA to twenty percent because right now we're very low and math to sixteen percent. So these are all of the schools and the subgroups which have high absenteeism and subgroups that are not doing well on our CAS data. So as you can see, our English learners, our students with disabilities, our Hispanic and socio-economically disadvantaged, our African-Americans and white and our two or more races. So lots of schools, lots of areas of need in terms of language arts and math. So again, these are our metrics, our I Ready growth. We have our LTS in there, which are fifty percent meeting, forty-seven percent for English learners, but as a district, we are fifty-three. For I Ready math, we're at forty-six as a district. We are at forty-two percent for English learners and forty-five percent LTS. And then our African-Americans are fifty percent meeting and exceeding. But then we go down to CAS and you see a big difference. As a district, we're at forty-four point seven percent. Our English learners are only at five percent and our LTS are at three percent. So vast different from I Ready this year. African-Americans are thirty-one percent and students with sixteen percent. So quite a difference from where we were at last year in terms of our I Ready. So they're not, last year our I Ready was sort of matching our CAS data and it's not this year. So you can see that in math, our district rise at thirty-seven percent. English learners at seven, LTS at two percent, African-Americans at twenty-four and social disability at fourteen. So lots of areas in which we need to focus on for next year. And then our science, as I stated earlier, we went down. We still don't have all the data for English learners or LTS in terms of science. So our focus is for our goal three is really looking at our professional development. We continue with supporting all of our teachers and having staff. We have our standard-based materials. Our focus this next year is really looking at our instruction and really working on small group instruction and ongoing monitoring. We want to make sure, we continue to provide the lower class sizes in K two. And then at our high priority sites, we continue to support them with instructional assistance as well, specifically for our CSI and ATS I schools for academics. We are providing staffing to support their K eights and providing a full curriculum with an outreach to all of our unduplicated pupils as well as we're continuing to work with special education and making those inclusive practices. And of course, as you know, we continue with building out our TK program and our extended learning time with summer school as well as after-school care. So again, the PD next year will be very, will be focused heavily on English learners as well as continuing with math in the K five. And we still have the pilot happening for middle school. We are, next year, one of the other things, we're providing coaches to high-priority schools to support tier one. But we are also doing a coaching series, supporting our coaches, learning to coach a little bit more and planning with our teachers next year as well. So it's a big focus. So as you see, this is our contributing actions table. I know Rick will go over a little bit more of that on the budget.
Okay, just say.
Yeah, you sure can. Go for it.
So on, on this table, the work that we completed this week actually, and it will be updated in the final version, the contributing actions are actually at thirteen point four four six percent now, which exceeds the requirement of thirteen point three 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 with a total plan, total plan contributing expenditures of ten million, three hundred and fifty-nine thousand and some change. So we went through and made sure that all the contributing actions were marked correctly at that point. We're still going to go through it again. But we were able to make the minimum percentage of planned improved services.
We've been working up to this till today. So all of our allocation, again, just as a quick reminder of who are our unduplicated pupils and what are the percentages at each of our school sites. As you can see, Hoover has the highest at ninety-eight percent. Garfield is right following right under ninety-seven point five. Then we have MIT and Taft. And then we have in our sixties to seventies, we have Roosevelt, Henry Ford, Adelante and Kennedy. And then Clifford at forty-six point five, Orion thirty-eight and Roy Klaus and North Star. So you can see this is where our population of unduplicated pupils are. So our next steps is for next week, we hope to be able to adopt our new LCAP and submit this to the county office. I know, I just realized that. And any questions on the LCAP?
I mean, what's the procedure here? Because it's the public hearing part. Do we, do we do discussion during it as well?
You can do discussion during it also.
I don't know if there are any public comments at this point in time, but maybe so.
Is this one for this item?
This is for, is this Catherine, is this on this item or is it for a different?
Catherine, is this for the? I don't know if this is, does that mean it's with the budget?
So why don't we do that when we get to the budget? But we can, this one is still on the LCAP.
Thank you. If you can turn on the, the mic too, Dan. Is it, it's still three minutes even when I. Okay, so you have three minutes.
Okay. Hi, good evening. Great presentation. Been coming lately to come and see who you are and then to. And then to speak with you guys with respect. Um, what I see over here, a greater presentation and then. I'm trying to learn over here, how can I uh, get uh, help for my daughter? That she's an English learner, that she's a struggle. And she's uh, she's going to seventh grade and she's a Kennedy. That is one thing. And then uh, I would try to learn and so that how can I approach you guys and, and to ask the right and the proper way. The other thing, what I see over here, the African Americans were shown that they are very. Struggle, right? And then so. I just, as I sitting over here hearing. How, what uh, how should I say? How the district is gonna work to improve those numbers up for the African American and the, and the Hispanics there I saw there in the chart. Thank you.
Are you talking about the terms of suspensions or absenteeism or both?
Well.
Or academics?
Uh, uh, yeah, I would say everything because if you see it. Uh, they, the Hispanics and African American, more the African American, they weren't the chart that they were. For some reason, they are struggling to meet all those goals. And I wondering. What the school, what the district would do to make sure to be, we, we the district over here, the city, how equally would everybody be in the same plane? Thank you.
Answer. So I think some of the things that we are doing in the district is we do have first, for example, for um. In terms of uh, chronic absenteeism, because we have a lot in our African Americans and our, our Spanish speak, our English learners, which are kind of high. So we do have a lot of outreach with our M T S cystosis and this year we've gotten, uh, we fine tune our protocols and how we're outreach into parents. As well as doing home visits and trying to create a plan for them to come back into school. So we do have students who have maybe some anxiety issues. We're also trying to give them more supports. Um, so that they can return to school because we do have a number of students who are chronically absent for many days at a time. For various different reasons. So part of that is what working with the families individually. Okay, so we have our tosas, our M T S, every just school has a tosa who works on attendance at each of the sites that call, calls families as well as. Kennedy has a community school coordinator who also supports in that endeavor. And then in terms of academics and um, English learners, we are putting a lot into our next professional development next year. For all of our students, because what you do for one group of student is going to help everybody. So we are bringing in um, some support systems to teach, work with our teachers in terms of coaching, in terms of planning for our, all of our students. Um, and making sure that they're using different variety of strategies to help all of our students and build vocabulary. So one of the areas that we're finding for many of our English learners. Is the lack of vocabulary development in some of our students who, what they need in terms of reading. Um, and math, because math today in the exams that they take, they have to be able to read. Right? And so you have a middle schooler, you know what the math is like in middle school. So we need to make sure that they have proficiency in reading to be able to understand what is asked for them in reading. So we're working a lot on making sure our teachers are prepared in planning and supporting all of our students next year. Okay?
That's, that's great. Uh, because I think uh. You mentioned uh. Like my daughter, she get a panic and stuff like that, and that's why she's a struggle and she's not able to be um. At, at other level, other students. So that's why of course, curious to see, okay, what is the steps to improve on that and what the uh, so the families and everybody knows. Uh, I want to add a little bit, if you could. Uh, like for the L pack. L pack, uh, the Kennedy, I found the. The meeting for the family to, to learn, like for me, the meeting for their package uh. They were on the website at three o, three fifteen P M. I found like it is, is, it's not helping. I work, everybody, I assume it works. It's hard to meet that line to come to participate on that. I went the other day, the last meeting they had. I asked the lady on the front desk. And I said, I'm here for the meeting. She said, oh, she looked at the computer. She said, okay. Library. I went to the library. I see it in the library for one hour. No one came to me to say, what are you doing over here? Or say, hey, the meeting has been canceled. No one. So that's why I'm like, okay, I need to put myself over here. It's a little nerve breaking to me, but I had to do for my kids. And the community, I, 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 I part of the community and I want to do whatever I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing. I know you and I spoke last week, our last time we were here.
Just a comment, señor. Entendemos mucho, entendemos mucho lo que estás haciendo. So the family engagement is going to have to be a really big piece next year and I'm. Sure that uh, I know Anna, we just can't do it all ourselves. So we're going to probably have to tap some of our. Tosas and, and Michelle Ramon, because there aren't enough of us. That can go out and especially to the engagement that he's looking for in Spanish. I mean, what, what brings Cecilia with us to help us? But um, that is something that's really going to have to. We'll have to look at and, and really try to move that needle in that, in that manner. Gracias señor por venir.
Can, can I add? Um, I, I want to say, uh, my name is Elisa. Hi. I, I want to say thank you very much for coming. Um, I appreciate that, you know, you care about your daughter and you want her to do well in school. And I'm speaking sort of on behalf of any parents who might be listening tonight and the importance of being engaged and. You know, it's at the end of the school year, so it's hard for us to do anything at this point because everybody's going off on breaks and we'll be coming back, you know, in a. What, six weeks or so and. Teachers and others will start their professional development and get ready, but my encouragement would be that you and your daughter. Engage then at Kennedy. And again, I'm saying this for any parent in your same shoes, because clearly we have. A number of students that are struggling in different ways, right? Um, and so my recommendation, and we've talked about this as a board, you haven't been to every board meeting, so you don't get to hear this, is that. You know, you and your daughter work with the teachers, um, the principal, the community school coordinator, those at the school sites, you could reach out and make some appointments. Um, I'm sure we could help you if we have his name and contact number. And set your daughter up for success for next school year and really make sure that she has the supports that she needs. And we have a lot of, you know, additional programs. We have sort of the academic day and we want to make sure she's set up for success there. So. Working with her teachers, what else does she need to do to either catch up or engage and be ready to go? Um, there may be some tutoring or things like that that we could help with or some online tools. And then I would also say, you know, after school programming, uh, maybe there are some options there. Extended day learning. Uh, I don't know at this point if we have some summer school options, but. You know, certainly we want to help your daughter. We want to help any of the students out there that are struggling. And especially those who are saying, hey, I, you know, I'm ready. I, I want to work with you. Let's work as a team. Let's make this happen. So. Um, thank you for, for uh, being brave and courageous and, and being here. We really appreciate. We need to hear from you because this will help us do a better job. So it's pretty clear. I apologize that nobody got to you in the library. Clearly there was a miscommunication. And we want to do better. So um, we will do that. I know that everybody's taking notes up here. Um, but I hope that we can uh, reengage with you and your daughter and, and really um, help her be successful next year. So, thank you.
So. So. Um. Igual te voy a hablar en español y ahorita les traduzco. Estoy muy, muy orgullosa de ti. Porque así como hablamos en las, uh, juntas de D I L A. Um, vienes para hacer, no saber qué es lo que está pasando. Entonces. Desafortunadamente, a veces necesitamos oír de ustedes porque muchas de las veces. Tenemos que saber qué en realidad está pasando en las escuelas. Entonces, se te agradece. Claro que todos están haciendo un esfuerzo para que todos los estudiantes salgan adelante. Pero necesitamos oír de tu voz. Ah, entonces te recomiendo que volvemos a lo mismo. El año que entra traigas a más padres de familia para que se involucren. Porque necesitamos oír especialmente de nuestra comunidad. Gracias. So I said, thank you. And of course I was going to translate to you guys. So I told him I was very proud. He's one of our D I L A representative and as we spoke, we need to hear their voice and. Definitely, um, you know. It's, it's good to hear from him and everybody is trying to make the best to make our students succeed. Um, but again, when you, when we don't hear from the community, you know. We need to hear from that community, in other words, so.
You have to bring more parents.
And ask, yes, to bring more parents.
Everybody bring a friend.
Yes.
Please keep coming. Please bring your friends. Uh, thank you for speaking up and hold us accountable for making sure that everyone in this community gets good education.
If it'd be okay if I could share the budget overview for parents as part of the L cap presentation? Uh, and then hand it back over for questions or whatnot.
So she has a speaker's question for a different item. There, there's a.
Right. So up on the screen is the budget overview for parents, which is included. Uh, as part of the L cap, I will note that we do not create this document. It is automatically generated. So there are, uh, you can't read some of the stuff uh, on the graph. Um, thank you, California Department of Education.
Literally it's populated, so you can't even make changes.
No, and it's an image that's generated, so I can't go in and edit it without creating a whole nother graph representing this. Yeah, but it's written on the bottom i- in the first chart, uh, what it shows is. Uh, approximately ninety-eight million dollars are being received by Redwood City School District, uh, under the local control funding formula. Of which ten point uh, two million uh, are uh, destined for supplemental concentration grants to. Uh, help our students most in need. Uh, on that picture, the other slices are the federal funds, state funds and other local funds. Uh, scrolling down. Uh, when we look at budgeted expenditures in the L cap, and this is one of the things that I had mentioned previously about the contributing actions table. Uh. We have a hundred and forty-three million uh, in budgeted expenditures that we'll talk about um, at the budget public hearing. Uh, and right now sixty-seven point three are identified in the L cap uh, of that hundred and forty-three. Important to note, special education, uh, which is approximately thirty million dollars next year. Uh, is not included in the L cap, right? So. Uh, as we start adding up the layers of that, we can see how we get to a hundred and forty-three million, but we are going to. Uh, check these numbers to make sure that the expenditures, everything is checked correctly. Uh, for giving credit to uh, L C F F and to the L cap. Uh, on the bottom of this page, increase or improve services for high need students. Uh, right now in the uh, L cap. Uh, we have identified ten point three five nine million dollars of expenditures for our highest needs students, which exceeds. Uh, the supplemental on concentration grant of ten point two seven two million dollars on that. Uh, there's no neat graph for that slide or for that information. Uh, on the bottom, uh, the last page of this. Uh, this is for twenty-three, twenty-four or our current school year. Uh, what was budgeted uh, and what we uh, are actuals or unaudited or estimated actuals at this point of twenty-three million, one twenty-five. Nine sixty-nine, which shows we spent in excess of the fifteen million dollars that was budgeted. This is another section that we're going to check. We know that we are above fifteen million. We just want to make sure that that number is correct. Uh, and we'll bring that back uh, at a future meeting. Uh, if we determine that before next week, it will come back next week. If not, it'll come back in the fall, uh, if we need to make any adjustments to that number and certainly at the mid-year review. Uh, in January, uh, as needed. And that is the budget overview for parents that is included in the L cap.
Thank you. Um, are there any other?
Or questions?
Or questions, yes.
I, actually, yeah, thank you. Uh, thanks for the presentation, Rick and Anna, and for um, the committee that worked on it. Um, for our speaker tonight, for talking about the needs of our emerging bilingual students. Um, I, I did have a couple like clarifying questions on this. Um, first, I'm going to start with that goal, goal three. I didn't. It says that only four percent are supposed to reach the reclassification. That, that's supposed to be four percent per year, right? And that's going to be updated bef- by. Before we approve it next week. Okay, great. So then. Yeah, and I, I know I'd asked this in email, so I just wanted to um, just to hear the answer again, but the, so the target rates, the target outcome rates. Uh, will that also change to reflect a four percent increase? Okay. Because then I just noticed as we were presenting it tonight that the year three outcomes for goal one. Like if it's a three percent per year. Decrease in chronic absenteeism and a two percent per year increase in attendance, it didn't look like. Um, that was reflected in those numbers either. So I, I'm assuming that that'll get updated. For, for example, the attendance rate was ninety-three point seven percent district wide baseline, and then the target year three is ninety-five point seven, but that should be higher, right? If it's. If it's two percent per year. I, I'm just wondering if all this stuff is going to get a once over before we approve it. Okay. Um, cool. And then the family survey that's added into uh, goal two. First of all, I think it's, I, you know, great that we're continuing with. Um, a high level goal, like the focus goal of really focusing in on emerging bilingual students. I really think that that's just an important goal for the district and I'm, I'm really, you know. I just, I'm proud that we're a district that has it as one of our top three goals. Um, but that family survey, that's just the families of, that only includes the families of the emerging bilingual students, right? Okay. That's all families. That's everybody that includes it. Okay. Oh, that's interesting that for that one, they need it. It's. Oh, just somewhere in the L cap, we have to have it covered. Okay. Okay, okay, cool. That's interesting to see. And then.
Can I just ask a follow-up?
Yeah.
Question that just because it'll make more sense if I think if I, so, yeah, because I was curious on when I looked at the family numbers, I think. I wrote it down that we only had, you know, seventeen percent of our families had responded. So the seventeen percent would be of our total parent population. Okay. Right. And I, we don't, we don't have a way through that because it's fairly anonymous. We, we wouldn't be able to tell like who are the emerging bilingual parents and who are, yeah, okay, that's what I thought. So it's sort of an interesting thing that it's in here. But it's not going to necessarily help us dial in. I mean, what you could do, I suppose, is look at schools and we know where we have higher percentages of unduplicated. Count. So because they do tell you which school they're at, because the schools are getting that data per school. Um, anyway, it was just, I, I had a kind of a similar thing of, you know, how, how will that data be used by us to really distinguish between the different? Because I, because I do think a lot of the data, what's really helpful is seeing all the different subgroups, because then it helps us really dial in. On, on which, who are the groups we need to be working with, right? And what kind of interventions or extra program we need to do. But anyway, that one, it's just a little more complicated, right? So anyway, thank, thank you for asking that, because that was one of my sort of just. Yeah, anyway, thank you. Thank, thank you for letting me expound on that.
Cool. And then thi- this is something else that I hadn't realized when I was reading the document over the weekend, but you, you kind of pointed it out. Uh, was that, that I ready did match to CASP. Um, and I don't know if we have theories yet or if we can understand, because I just remember last year, like it was a really good kind of indicator of the CASP performance. Um, don't need, you know, just something could be interesting to follow up at some later, later time to, to see if we have any theories. Um. That was kind of interesting.
We are going to follow. There is especially one school because we were meeting with the principals this week. Um. Warren Cedar said, you know. My third graders did really, really well on I ready, but when it came to CASP, I don't know what happened. And my fifth graders did poorly in I ready and CASP.
Interesting.
It ended up apart.
Yeah.
He says, something is wrong, something is wrong. So we. It, it brought me to think after that conversation with it, we need to look at it again. And I know we're looking at other assessments because we're not sure, but we just have not. We checked with other school districts for what they're using and how it is and how it correlates with.
Right.
The CASP, but we haven't gotten there yet to really determine if we're going to go in another manner.
Have we asked I ready? We've got a contract with.
Right, right.
Hey.
Yeah.
We met, I met with I ready. We have another meeting tomorrow. Um, one of the things that we have seen and I asked is. Are you seeing other districts plateau? Because that's where we are. We're plateauing. And they said, yes, they are. They're also seeing the same thing. I don't know if their results on CASP are similar to ours. But definitely, we said, you know, in the last three years, we're seeing a plateau. We're not seeing any movement in terms of what is happening. So they are making some changes in terms of the middle school curriculum. Um, and the lessons that they're doing sort of like an intervention type uh, plan or lessons. In the middle school, not necessarily in the elementary. So they are trying to differentiate what's happening in sixth, seventh and eighth grade versus what's happening in the primary grades. Um, but they're, they're still in pilot phase of making those changes. But they are seeing the same thing across um, the state is what they said. So they're also seeing that.
Yeah, and I kind of missed that re- in reading the, you know, the doc before. It wasn't really until you kind of presented it. I was like, oh, wow, that looks different because we've already looked at. You know, most of this data, none of the, most of this data except for the CASP, we've already reviewed and looked at with through I ready, through. Our absenteeism data, our panorama survey. Um, so I think we already knew. So I think we already knew the, you know, the year reflection, the annual update before it was presented here, and so there was nothing surprising there. You know, it's, I'm glad that this, this version of the LCAP is making more, you know, annual goals that are a little, going to be a little bit easier to track and follow and feel a little bit more right-sized. It seems like the goals were a little bit too much of a stretch, especially coming out of a, a global pandemic in the previous version of the LCAP, because we missed on, I think on almost every single one of them. So great. Thanks for the work.
Yeah, thanks so much. It's a lot of data, and you know, I love data. That said, it's hard when a lot of the data is grim. I, I love our structure that we're using to approach this. I love a lot about our approach, our focus on, you know, K to two, the increased data that we're getting there on literacy progress, the increased investment that we're making in reading specialists and tracking. Really important that we get the whole student population fully English literate by the end of third grade. So just really seeing that explicit focus on that is important, given that ELS are more than a third of the students in our district. In that light, it's really distressing to see that the percentage of ELS making meaningful forward progress went from fifty-five percent to forty percent. Right? So this is, these numbers are going in the wrong direction, which is really frustrating. And certainly the, some of the panorama survey results were also frustrating to see that less than a quarter of our middle schoolers felt like they were engaged with their, with their school. Where, where I struggle is like, I, I want to come up with the silver bullet answer, and then we just need to do X everyone, right? And then we, we've got a nice answer, but I don't have anything like that in my pocket. And I, I feel like the district is trying to be very thoughtful about our approach there. And so I, I want to applaud the thoughtfulness in the structure at the same time as, you know, candidly assessing that the numbers aren't good and don't seem to be moving in the right direction, which doesn't give me confidence that just continuing forward, we're going to be able to hit some of these goals that we have. We have good goals. They're the right kind of goals to have here. But I just, I feel a fiduciary duty to say like, i- if we've been doing a lot of things that sound really good, but they're not getting us the results that we need, what is the change of approach that we're planning on taking that will get us to the results that we need here? Because we can't just keep on keeping on and, and expect to get to, get to good outputs here. So, you know, in terms of the focus on ELS, it's great. I, I think there's a couple of different things that we know help a population like that, and more tutoring, great teachers with excellent professional development, engaged families, finding better ways to engage the EL families would, would be great. And I can see the focus on professional development, which is great. And I think the acknowledgement of like literacy is the root for all the other subjects, including math, is something that districts onboard with and, and seeing as well. So, yeah, I'm not sure what to say. I appreciate having the data, even if it's showing me something that I'm not happy to see. And I, I wish I had more explicit, concrete guidance for the course correction that we need to make, but I'll, I'll just say that like, it feels like we, we do need a, a course correction. And thank you for all the work that went into preparing these hundreds of pages of documentation. It's a lot of hard work.
The other thing that we need to acknowledge is, you know, we're looking at this data. And when you look at the data, and I know Michelle is working with the community school coordinators, MTS, TOS, and all that yesterday, no, today and tomorrow. And they're looking at it. And what we need to start looking at is to concentrate on that cohort, because you, you made a comment that you want everybody to be EL proficient by third grade. Is that, I'm, I'm not sure if that's the comment you made, but it sounded like it. You know, that's not going to happen if a child enters in this district at second grade. There's no way that by the time they're at third grade, they're going to be proficient in that manner, where you, what you just said. So it takes a period of anywhere, once you enter, anywhere from three to five. That's the research, and we've got the data to show you if you want to see it. It's, it's
Sure, but I think we can caveat that like we, we're all students that enter in TK or K. We want them fully English proficient by the end of third grade.
I totally agree. I agree with that. But I just wanted to make that one comment, that when they come in and they have not been with us, and here they are in second grade, there's no way they're going to get there.
And they, well, they need to be coming to school, right? Because if you look at the data then for some of those same subgroups, they have the high rates of chronic absenteeism. And if you have high rates of chronic absenteeism for TK, K, one, two, you're not going to be ready by third grade, right? So they're, yeah, so anyway, I feel your same frustration, because I look at this, and I know we have all these different programs and stuff, and there's so much that goes into all of this, and I interrupted you, so I'll let you keep going, but.
But I want to see that, the cohort data is what I want to look at. I want to look at those kids that are right now, that have been with us. TK wouldn't have started, right, three years? No, that's been with us since kindergarten, and they're at third grade. Okay, where are they? That's what I really would like to see. And they were, they could be ELS, and maybe they could be RFP kids at this point in time.
I mean, I have to believe that if we start getting more or all of our students in TK, so they come to us in fourth grade, and if they actually show up on a regular basis, so they're not chronically absentee, absent. And we have all of these new things that we put in that I think will get better. And this is really kind of, you know, maybe year two for a few of them, year one for some of them, I mean, new curriculum, new instruction practices, new literacy sorts of things. That I have to believe in a couple of years, we are going to start to see a lot of those benefits. I mean, otherwise, I mean, I mean, I, I do feel like all of you professionals have done so much research in terms of what works. And we, we know it works in the ideal setting, right, with, but you have, you know, that's why we need engaged parents, right? We need to make sure that parents and guardians are getting their students to, to school. And, and then, of course, we need to make sure that the teaching is great. That's why I love the idea of the coaching. You know, we've done a lot of professional development. We've done some coaching, but I think more coaching would be great. I know, Dr. Baker, you talked about, with me at least, on the one-on-one, I don't know if all the board members have heard that, but your ideas that you, you've been doing it all along, but going to do it even more so next year with your teams of administrators going out and really
Yeah, I've been talking to you about the new, the new manner of how we are going to evaluate.
Yeah, because I just want to say, I mean, I think we all, we look at this data, and we hear from a parent that I think represents a lot of the parents in our district. And we know that we have a lot of students who are struggling, and we need to do better, and we're trying to do better, and we have a lot of things going on. And I do feel like pre-pandemic, we were seeing an upward trajectory. And we don't want to keep blaming the pandemic, but it really did set us back. I mean, and I feel like we're kind of starting from where we were at, you know, several years ago. With that said, we've also added a lot of new things. And then I also just want to add that I totally agree with you. I think if we can come up with more money for the tutoring, you said that the CAPS tutoring, it does show some progress, whether it's CAPS tutoring or other words. I think some of these students, they just need some more one-on-one or super small group instruction. And in the larger setting of a classroom, they get a little small group instruction, but they're not getting as much as they need if we really want to move them. I mean, that's my opinion. And, and I think we know that people pay a lot of money to get tutoring because it works, right?
I mean, we, we know from decades of academic research that tutoring is devastatingly effective. So just the, the more that we can throw that at a population that needs it and find ways to, to accommodate the better. And there may be some new options that are available to us with AI tutors that are multilingual to help supplement, not to replace humans, but to help supplement the education opportunities that we're giving these folks. We also know that for this population, they are school-dependent. The quality of the instruction that they get from their primary teacher is the number one determinant of their long-term academic performance. The other things can help, like improved curriculum, but those are all secondary relative to the quality of instruction that they get from their primary teacher, who's responsible for them in the classroom. So a focus on what we can do to make sure that our, our very best teachers, and that we, that we're recruiting the best of the best, and we're getting them associated with the priority schools in particular, is, I think, ultimately going to be how we're going to move the needle for, for this population. So I think if there's more that we can do to review teacher quality there and to help encourage great teachers to go and teach at these schools that are long-tenured as well, experienced professionals, I, I think that would really move the needle for us.
Just on this topic, I, I just want to say, one thing about staying the course is that we do have to give things sometimes to, to take in. We put in a lot of changes, and I'm going to say this hyperbolic. I know that you don't, you didn't really mean this, but like, we're not going to see a curriculum change in one I-Ready cycle, you know, from one test to the next. It's going to take a couple of years for that to happen. So I do think we have to be mindful about where we're putting in change. And we put in, in my opinion, a lot of change this year with adopting two curriculums through K through five. And I, that is going to take a couple reps to get through and be able to make sure that it learns and see that. So while we should be looking for, you know, it's not going to be instantaneous. And so I, I do think that there are places where we do want to stay the course, having had to make a change. Yeah.
Totally. And I, I want to emphasize, I'm not suggesting like, hey, it's been one year in the new curriculum. Let's go try another curriculum. I, what I'm saying is, I think we've picked the good curriculum. I think we've made some great upgrades. I, I think it's probably going to take a few years to fully realize the benefits of that. That's not going to be a single cycle. And I am skeptical that even the fully realized benefits of the high-quality curriculum that we've picked is going to radically transform the numbers that we're seeing here. I think they're going to be a notch in the right direction. I, I have no regrets about what we picked, about how we picked it. I, I, and, and I don't think we're likely to be able to find more low-hanging fruit there of some other tweak that we do to the curriculum that sort of like magically gets us to great numbers. I, I think it's a secondary thing. I think the primary thing is the, the quality of instruction that they're getting from the teachers.
So just to address it, that's why at some of these schools, we do have specific coaches this year at those sites daily, because we do know that to move that, we do need, the teachers are doing all they, they're doing a lot, and they've learned a lot. But when it takes the planning, so that's why we have dedicated coaches at many of our sites to do and start planning and supporting the teachers to really deepen their learning and their thinking, because it's not just our new teachers, it's all teachers. And so we all need to make sure we're planning for instruction for all of our students. And so that's our goal this year with our dedicating our staff to that, to, to that support, because it's, it's a critical piece to move the needle. Right? Because there's a lot of curriculum. So we want to really put, put them to be successful, the teachers to be successful, having those supports. And principals being mindful about creating the time, opportunities for planning with them at, during the day, during, after school, so that they are moving the, because that's the only way we can do it, is really take honing in on those skills and moving it forward. So just want you to know, that's one of our big, big efforts this texture.
That's awesome. And it also feels likely true that the, in, in a ideal universe, the principals are themselves providing a lot of that instructional oversight and guidance and mentorship versus third-party coaches coming into the classroom. And so if there's things that the district can do to give explicit guidance to the principals around expectations for observation, for feedback, and to free up their time from some of these other things that are maybe distracting them from that, that, that would be warmly welcome on my behalf.
That is our plan. That is our plan.
Introduced Monday. It was Monday.
I'm happy to see these smiles.
What was well-received? I think it was very, I don't, I didn't hear one negative thing. I think it was well-received, because I think one of the things, we're being very clear, right? We're being very clear on what our expectations are, and we're going to be very clear with the teachers about what our expectations are and how we all need to work towards when. So we're, we are creating some cohesion in the district that hasn't been there, and so that's our goal next year, is really trying to beat that cohesion so that we all have systems that are aligned and making sure we're all working towards the same goal.
That's fantastic, because when I went on some of these school tours, I was hearing like from teachers that a principal might only come by like one or two days a school year to go and observe and give feedback. And that's obviously not great.
I just wanted to highlight one of the things that really stood out to me in this presentation. And if you have it in front of you, it was still open. It's slide sixteen. It's the California Dashboard. Red indicators for chronic absenteeism, absenteeism and suspension. I think this is urgent that we address this. We know if they're absent, if they're suspended, they're not in the classroom, they're not learning. When I go through this list of schools that were all flagged red, we have one that is flagged seven times, when the rest are not more than three. We have four schools that had zero flags. We have five schools that have two flags. One that has one and one that has three, and we have one that has seven flags. And so I'm asking, does this school site need even more additional support in not just getting the kids to school, but dealing with the behaviors that might get them suspended? Maybe you guys can address this. You can talk about it offline and, and figure out how we can support that school even more, because that's, that's a huge number. Yeah. Thank you. So that's the only thing I really wanted to point out. We have been on this for an hour. So that's what I was going to ask. Do you have more comments, or are we ready to close the public hearing?
Just a quick one. Can you remind me, I know there's some what I want, state exams that the teacher cannot, I guess, teach to the test? Can you remind me, are these it? So therefore, parents cannot help their students? Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure that that's what, because again, that's what makes it even harder, right? So that's my only comment. I don't want to take this longer, and then I know it, it's very important, though, to understand that sometimes a student can be progressing in the classroom, but when it comes to testing, it's different, right? Whether, again, you build the anxiety, you just go blank. I mean, there's a lot of things that can take place during a test. So that was it. That was my only comment. Thank you.
So I guess we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And you have, your card is for the next item. Yeah, so we're going to open the hearing for the RCSD twenty-four, twenty-five proposed budget. She has a card in for another item later.
While you're pulling up your presentation, I just want to say, I, I sort of commented, people were commenting. But I did want to just say thank you, Anna, and the whole team and the committee, and just everybody who was involved. I know that Mike and David were on the committee as well. I just want to say thank you. It's a tremendous amount of work. I mean, multiple documents, hundreds of pages. And I think, I think you've come up with a really good plan and identified, you know, where we need to be focusing our efforts. I just want to say thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. Tonight, we are presenting the twenty-four, twenty-five proposed budget in the public hearing. Just like the LCAP, this is required to be presented to the board following the LCAP public hearing. Just as next week, it will be approved after the LCAP is approved. Excuse me. As we go through the school year as it near completion, we are at the budget adoption stage. The governor will sign the budget soon. So everyone continues to get paid in Sacramento. If there's any significant changes, we'll bring that back at the first board meeting in August for a forty-five-day revision. There's, doesn't appear to be much with the budget that will impact us, where we need to bring something back. But if we do, it will happen at the first board meeting. Unaudited actuals will come in September, which will give us a better picture of where we're actually at for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Taking into account some things that we still don't know in terms of some encumbrances that will be invoiced and we will pay in the next couple of weeks versus ones that will not be paid and will regain that money, if you will, or be able to bring that money back to the general fund and apply it to the budget for twenty-four, twenty-five, thus reducing some of the items that we'll talk about tonight. We don't need to get too far ahead of ourselves, but, you know, December's right around the corner and first interim. So I think I covered this slide already. I think the most important one on here. As we get enrollments for twenty-four, twenty-five, as we get our unaudited actuals completed, the picture may change a bit, probably not, you know, significantly like it did last year. But there will be some savings that we haven't anticipated or realized in the budget that should be coming forward, as well as having enrollment numbers and then projecting out from that point in time at the start of the school year. As we go into the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, here are the major assumptions in the same format that we use at every presentation, showing district enrollment for this year, projected for next year, twenty-five, twenty-six, and our brand-new out year as of July one, twenty-six, twenty-seven, with the average daily attendance, our unduplicated pupil percentage, the local control funding formula COLA. It did go up from second interim by about a quarter percent to one point zero seven for twenty-four, twenty-five. And you can see over the next couple of years, that's And you can see over the next couple of years, that's expected to increase 2 and 3% prospectively, which will increase the funds for supplemental concentration that will be in the LCAP in future years. You can see CalSTRS remains steady. It takes legislative action in order to increase the CalSTRS retirement rate. That is our retirement plan for our certificated employees. CALPERS continues to creep up, although it's not as bad as they projected earlier this fiscal year. But still significantly more over the course of the last few years. That's creating additional opportunities for our budget to be able to cover those expenditures. Step in column remains the same at 1.5%. Property tax increased projected at 5% annually. And you can see the CPI index as we go forward. For Fund One, and tonight, the focus will be on our general fund or Fund One for the presentation. And here you can see the revenue for our LCFF, the 98909 is what I mentioned with the budget overview parents. Federal revenues, other state revenues, and our local revenues that come into Redwood City, giving a total revenues of approximately 129 million for the 2425 school year. Here's a quick breakdown of what that revenue looks like through our LCFF sources, federal sources, lottery, our local revenues, including leases, and then major parcel tax. And then here we show that at budget adoption, estimated transfer of 9.725 million from Fund 25. And that makes up 138,715,059 for the total amount of revenue for 2425. Here's that chart in pie graph showing that about 60% of our revenue comes from LCFF, which is primarily local property taxes. When we look at expenditures, excuse me, we're projecting in the proposed budget 143,441,439 of expenditures between salaries, benefits, books and supplies, and services and other operating expenses. Here's a breakdown by the category of salaries, benefits, supplies, expenses, making up the 143,441,000. As we get into here, and there's a couple, there's one or two additional slides in the presentation that we'll talk about. These are expenditures broken down, and you can see what types of positions fall into those categories. Pretty close to color coded, might be a couple shades off. Important to note on here that certificated, classified, and associated benefits make up about 80% of our budget going into the 24, or excuse, 2425 school year. A little bit higher than it was at last year's budget adoption. Thanks to the work in HR and our departments, we're staff. We have more staffing, internal staffing or district staffing, and less contracted services out. So that has made, at this point, that jump from, I believe it was 74% or 75% to 80% that we're projecting for 2425. This slide is a snapshot of Fund 01. You may recall the conversation we had at the board retreat, where we did a simple one just to give an idea down. These are numbers coming straight out of our SACS forms for Fund 01, broken down as California Department of Education requires for budget adoption and budget submission to the state or to the county and the state. And you can show, see that 143.4 million is our anticipated expenditure budget for this year. And we have matching revenues, almost matching revenues with a transfer in of 9.7 million dollars from our Fund 25. So this slide is new, and I'm not going to go through everything on here, but this is color coded for the next slide that shows teacher and classroom support salaries. That includes both certificated and classified that work directly with the classroom. We have administration and supervisors, which includes us sitting in this room here from the district side, as well as our site principals, vice principals, our classified management, including directors, supervisors. Make up that beige color. Classified support is everything that's not associated with direct classroom support. And you can see through that list, tech support, office managers and assistants, translation services, custodial M and O fall into this bucket of expenditure. We have our retirement and benefits. This is the only one that's still broken out on the next chart that you'll see in a minute. So I tried to make the color somewhere in between the green and the bluish on there. So that that can be combined in terms of explanation and you can see what that makes up. STIRS, the state teachers retirement system, PERS, the public employees retirement system, which is to the benefit of classified employees, and then the normal other taxes on wages as well as health and welfare benefits are included there. Books and supplies include textbooks and other core materials. General materials and supplies as well as equipment. And then contracted services, insurance, and operational expenses include a lot of sped services, enrichment programs that we pay for. You know, PE plus comes to mind, that would come under this category. Our insurance for property and liability, fingerprinting services, legal expenses, utilities, and waste disposal. And this is not an exhaustive list, but just to give you an idea of the different types of of expenditures that fall into our 5,000 series, our services and other operating expenses. So now if we look at this chart, this is breaking those bands down to show where each of those fall in and the amount of money that's spent on that. We're still adding up to 143.4 million. But as, as we know, school district budgets are complicated. How funding is not only received, but then allocated. We'll continue to work to break some of these down into different silos and combine some other things. But when we start talking about splitting some of them, it becomes really hard because benefits are all in one bucket. Employees are all over the place that are tied to a benefit and trying to break out exact numbers, which I was trying to do, but was a little more than I could do for this this graph. But in summer, we're hoping to get some templates together, where it'll be easy to plug and play in the future. So this simply is that visual legend or the legend on the previous slide in a graphical form, showing those seven bands of expenditures. So when we look at the ending fund balance for Fund 01 in the proposed budget, you can see ending fund balance of approximately 15.4 million at this point in time. So showing not only are we still deficit spending, but we also brought in money from Fund 25. And that'll be important as we go through the next couple of slides. As we continue to strengthen our budget and our reserves. When we go into multi-year projections, I did include estimated actuals on here for 2324. And then once again, the introduction of 2627 that comes into play starting July 1. You can see that revenues are slightly increasing over this time period through a combination of LCFF and increase in property taxes primarily. Others are relatively flat. Of note, in the revenue section, transfers in. We are still estimating 9.3 million for 2324. Estimating 9.725 million for 2425. And then we are not transferring in money or at this point, not allocating money from Fund 25 in 2526 or 2627. Because you can see, as we look through expenditures, we are getting stronger with budgeting. We do know there's still work to be done that we've talked about throughout the 2324 school year. The actions taken through December, January, and February in preparation for March, as well as the work that the departments have done. You know, I got to give a lot of credit to both of my friends sitting over here with the work they did this year between staffing and really examining the LCAP, the LCFF, and the expenditures in there. We do show that there will have to be a fiscal stabilization plan as of today, because there are unidentified measures of 7.5 million in 2526 and 4.85 million in 2627. But I think as daunting as that may seem at this point, I think it's still huge win for us looking at those numbers and not transferring money in, right? So we'll still have money in Fund 25. But if we can look at, looking at our programs and services and making sure that we're aligned with the amount of enrollment in the programs that we want to have, this may become easier than we think. And also as a reminder, it's 7.5 million if those are ongoing cuts. They carry forward to 2627 and that 4.8 is removed. There's also a good chance that once we get through unaudited actuals, that that number will adjust as well going into first interim from the 7.5 million. So there's a lot of moving parts in June that'll be, you know, they'll get a little bit stronger as we get enrollment. Once we get our first estimates of enrollment of people or students that show up in the first 10 days of seabed's day in early October, unaudited actuals in September, these numbers will fluctuate some. But I think it's still positive that we're not showing a transfer in at this point. And that it's not an unreasonable number. We're not looking at 20 or 25 million dollars in that next year that I know some districts are right now, right? So yeah. So I think that's important to note as we go through this. And if we do all of this, you can see that we're making our effort for economic uncertainty with very little unassigned or unappropriated balance in the future years. But that will move forward and that will change as well. Still with the goal of being positive in December, positive in March, as we go into the 2526 budget cycle. That's a little too far ahead to talk about though. So on that fiscal stabilization plan, you know, I'm going to highlight again that we're showing zero transfers in in 2526, 2627, 7.5 million and 4.85 respectfully. And why we're doing this is because we want to reduce deficit spending as much as possible and have a stronger budget overall. We want to, you know, goal is to reduce or eliminate transfers in from Fund 25. Increasing costs we have to pay attention to, you know, healthcare premiums, goods and services, other contractual services that we use, prices are going up, they're not staying flat. The settlement agreements, and I'm referring to our bargaining units, our CTA, CSEA, and the rest of our employees that don't fall under those two units. As we know, we are settled with our CTA, we have what management agreement that will be coming to the board. But we're still unsettled with CSEA for this fiscal year 2324, as well as 2425 at this point. So hopefully sometime in the near future, we will reach settlement with CSEA. And then we'll be able to adjust the budget accordingly for that, which then may change those numbers in the opposite way, right? As we look at the impact of those settlements. And then the full expenditure of one-time funds. Anna, next to me, has done her best to allocate as much as she can to the remaining one-time funds, knowing that those, for the most part, will be fully expended by the end of the 2425 school and fiscal year. So we'll have decisions to make on those programs and services that are being funded. If there is a need to keep them, we know some of them there is, some of them we'll make a decision on. And then we'll have to find other funds that we have to free up in order to pay for those programs and services that are funded from those one-time funds. So there's a lot of work to do. It's, you know, not just as simple as a line on a number in a cell. But a lot of work that needs to happen over the course of, you know, starting the summer really, going into the fall in preparation for first interim. You can see on the right hand of this, right side, right hand side of the slide. We need to evaluate all district expenditures, evaluate staffing based on enrollment. Develop our plan for outreach. Dr. Baker and staff have already been discussing this. We'll be working on that through July and early August and then be able to bring something back to the board to discuss how we're going to solicit input on budget decisions through the probably through the year, but specifically in the fall, as we prepare for first and second interim reports. They'll provide opportunities for input from our community of stakeholders. We'll provide regular updates on progress through those means once determined for inclusion, as I said, in the first and or second interim report, depending on what it is and how it takes place. Another thing that we have to talk about during the public hearing is balances in excess of the minimum reserve requirement. On this slide, although very small, we're 180,000 dollars over the minimum reserve. The 80,000 of it is for prepaid in stores. And another 100,000 is used for substitutes and healthcare as needed. Certainly not a large amount, and I'm very similar to what it was at this time last year, I believe. This is our other fund balances, expected for 2425 with the proposed budget. Obviously, for some of these, it's very early, specifically the one I'll pick on a little bit is Fund 21. We know that that's going to have a different ending fund balance than what it shows now, once we get some projects up and going and slated for starting next year and next summer, right? So that likely will not be that same number. As we go through these, we still have money in Fund 35 that we're going to use to offset some of the solar costs. So once we have contracts on that, we'll see a difference there. So this is, you know, very early and will change as some of these bigger programs have projects and associated funding with them going forward. So areas to monitor, I've already mentioned CSEA negotiations for the current year 2324 and next year 2425. Fully expended one-time funds, enrollment staffing, California proposed state budget, which I don't think will have a huge impact on us, but there may be some. And then still the economy and what's happening nationwide, but specifically in this area with goods and services as well as home sales, right? That directly impact us. So next steps, next week, we'll come back and bring the LCAP and the budget for adoption on Wednesday night. September, unaudited actuals. And then in the fall, I made it a very generalized fall 24. We'll be going through the expenditures review and start making those budget decisions for 2425 that will come first interim, second interim, and then any associated changes to personnel in March, and then the first interim report in December. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Rick. We do have a speaker's card on this, so are there any clarifying questions before, and then we'll take the card? Okay, Catherine Stewart, you can, you have three minutes, and just make sure you turn the microphone on, please. No, press the button on the right.
Hello, thank you. So I didn't see it in there, but I was just wondering how many dollars specifically are set aside for homework club, after-school tutoring, specifically for math until 6:00 PM? My son had some really good results with Mr. Coranza, which was, he had a math teacher, and the math teacher would do after-school tutoring and stuff like that. And so for a lot of people who are working parents, which of course I'm not, I just eat bonbons all day and all that kind of stuff, but for normal people who don't want to shell out thousands of dollars for private tutors and stuff, this is a really helpful thing is having the after-school tutoring. So I just wondered, I didn't see it on the budget of how many dollars we're setting aside for after-school tutoring, and can it last until 6:00? Because for example, with my Because for example, with my kid, after about an hour, he falls apart anyway and I just pick him up. But for a lot of kids, if they can stay until six, like with programs like Reach and all that kind of stuff, if they can still stand until six or so, their parents can pick them up at the end of work and it just makes things smoother for people that are working parents. So I just wondered about that is, I know some of the teachers actually stay after class and help kids anyway. But I wondered, what exactly do we have in the budget for that particular area of after-school tutoring in particular? And then another question was about supervision and safety during before and after-school recess, lunch and P E. I know we sometimes have lunch ladies and yard people and things like that supervisors, but I think that that is an area that we could do more of. And the reason is because if you don't feel safe at school and things are not being supervised, then you're not likely to want to show up. And so a lot of the, you know, melodramas of childhood and so forth play out on the areas where you're not in a classroom. So I think that's another area that I didn't see specifically. I saw that there was like classified sort of, I thought that's where it's sort of be lumped in, but I didn't notice it in particular. So I wondered, how many dollars do we have for after-school tutoring and until six or so? And then how many hours do we, I mean, how many dollars do we have for supervision and safety in particular during those sort of outdoor times where people are running around doing assorted things? Some of the things are great and some of the things are not so great. So that's what I'm wanting to know about in particular. Oh, and one last thing was about the parent meetings is I found over the years that if you want to have like a PTO or PTA meeting or anything like that, and it may help for their situation also is if you provide a room that has childcare with a couple of people who will supervise and you provide free pizza, what happens is then the parents can just have their kids with them and the kids can be eating their pizza and doing their thing while the parents are doing their meeting and make the meeting start like, say, for example, at six thirty or something. So the parents can just swoop in after school. Maybe the kid went to the tutoring up until that time and, you know, and that way the parent doesn't have to stop off, get food, figure out what the kid will actually eat because they'll all eat pizza. That's just their, I mean, that's, that's the food du jour, you know, so. But that helps on some of the meetings is, you know, provide something that's easy for them and then the parents don't have to stress about it. And they can do a quick meeting and get, get the kid home to bed in a reasonable amount of time. So that's just something I've seen that seems to help. I think that the daytime meetings are easy for people like me who can just pop in after I drop somebody off at school or I can pop in during the day and stuff like that. But for a lot of people who are working on a nine to five or, you know, eight to six type of schedule, it's not so easy. So that's just something that might, might help with, with making it more convenient for people. So that was it. And by the way, we've had really great experiences with all our teachers. So yay. Thank you.
Regarding the
Specifically how much goes to math tutoring? Because it's going to be different at every school.
It's different at every school site and it depends on, number one, those school sites that who have the unduplicated students, there is a set amount of dollars that are specifically for those students. Now for a school site like North Star, which is, is different. There is within either the SIP budget that dollars are allocated or you can also use your parcel tax dollars that each school can determine how that's going to be spent. The SIPs. Site improvement plan.
Yeah, I would just respond generally that I think, you know, your questions are good ones and probably better done at the site level because the overall budget, I mean, what we prepare doesn't necessarily dial into that. I mean, eventually it all gets from, you know, where it is up to the budget. But those are good questions. And I just want to say, I appreciate hearing from you. I mean, I think all of us believe that yard duty is important. I mean, I think that's sort of what you're saying is supervision out on the playground is important. So thank you for that comment. And then it kind of, you know, the whole tutoring comment is sort of what we were talking about earlier, the importance of that. And it's great to hear that you've been having good results at your school site. I think we've been hearing that from others as well. So thank you.
Just for the record, I actually do not agree with the yard duty extra supervision comment. There's a fair amount of evidence that excess adult supervision has negative impact on teen mental health in particular.
Or teens, maybe.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I think for like K to five, you'll find me a little bit more empathetic. But I think kids need unstructured and unsupervised playtime together to become well-adjusted adults. And I feel like the evidence is pretty strong on.
But Captain, we can't have it back and forth. I'm sorry. Were you done with your comment?
I was just going to say, I think with our yard duty, we just make, we have to make sure that they have good professional development so they understand what their roles and responsibilities are. And I know when I've been out on the school site, I've seen some of the yard duty do a really nice job with bringing, like, there's been a conflict, right? Bringing those individuals together and kind of helping them have the conversation that they need to have. And frankly, if we didn't have supervision, we could have some really hurt people out. I mean, I, anyway. So, but, but we don't need to, this is a big group. We don't need to talk about it here. But anyway, it's interesting to have a good conversation about it.
We should.
So I'll bring it back to the board for comments or questions on the public hearing.
You know, the one thing I want to say, Rick, is thank you so much for the work that you did on the extra kind of infographs or whatever we're calling them. And just the explanations, because I do think, you know, we often talk about it here and I think, you know, we've had the opportunity to have a lot more one-on-one time thinking about the budget and understanding what goes into it. But I think for a lot of laypeople, they don't understand what those buckets mean. And so I think this is great. And I think it's a really, you know, I think you're well beyond a good start. I, I really appreciate the work that's gone into that. And I know it's not easy. So thank you for doing that. And I, and I hope that we can then, I know we've got different community groups and things, we can start sharing that and getting feedback from them, like, does it make sense?
Have a draft in your mailbox tomorrow of how we are going to move forward with communicating this process. And as I spoke to one board member already today, feel free to look at this draft, make comments, make suggestions, take things out, take things, put things in, it's up to you. But I need to have everything back by the first week in August because I know I want to send it out in one of my first communiques that goes out to the public.
Yeah, and I think it'll just be great because we get so many questions from the community where they don't really understand how the money is spent. So I really appreciate that. And I just want to say, I mean, I don't have a lot of specific questions on the budget, but I just want to say thank you very much. Clearly a lot of work goes into creating the budget and I think it looks good to me.
Thank you, Rick. You know, I've been on you for some time to have us take steps towards having a more legible budget. And this is really meaningful in terms of a forward motion there. As I think was evident, the required documentation from the state of California is almost anti-legible. We're going to force you to produce graphs that literally nobody can read. And I think pushing back against that to have something that, not only that we can present to the community as a clear artifact of this is where our spending is, I think clarity about our spending enables higher quality discussion at a board level about where our spending is and whether or not that spending matches the real priorities that we have for, for the district. And so I'm really happy to see us making forward progress in that way. And I think that's a really useful input to the required fiscal stabilization measures that are going to be needed because they let us have a more coherent, plain, English, plain, Spanish discussion about where we want to put our chips, put our investments. Because there's going to have to be some really tough calls. And I, I feel like last time we, we had to, you know, go around this rodeo was a little bit less clear to the public, you know, what a fiscal stabilization plan means. And I feel like we've learned from that and we're going to be improving our communications with the community on this, that it means cuts. It's probably not going to need to be all of seven and a half million. Things, things are going to be not quite as grim as that. But there are going to need to be some, some tough decisions that are going to need to be made. And I feel like, I feel optimistic that we're going to do a better job connecting with the community, letting them know early like now that cuts are forthcoming and we're going to have a really thoughtful process to focus our invested dollars to maximize the educational opportunities for the, for the kids who are in the district. Quick tiny typo, page fourteen says twenty twenty five, twenty twenty seven. I think that meant to say twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven. But yeah, looking forward to continuing to working with you, Rick, on making the budget super digestible. So thank you.
It's the last column.
Yeah, it's just it chose a two-year, but I think it just, the column header was twenty twenty six, twenty two. Love it.
I just want to say thank you and of course the business office for all their hard work. For you, obviously for putting this and really making it understandable. And I just went blank of what I was going to say, besides my thank you. Yes, I know what I was going to say. Sorry. I appreciate the draft that obviously we haven't seen yet. One of the things that I'm curious as a classified employee in another district and obviously not everyone knows about budget. Have we in Redwood City, I know that I hear like HR does some kind of communication to the classified employees and not necessarily just classified, but certificated as well, right? Like a town hall or somehow back like four superintendents ago at my district, we used to have a I, I just, I think it's just, it's not that late, but I've had a long day.
With the superintendent?
Yes.
That's what I'm doing. Lunch with the superintendent.
But it was not a lunch. It was more of, and I can't think it was when.
It's a bag lunch with the superintendent that would start.
It was like, we just got together actually in the boardroom and they pretty much gave us almost like the newsletter, a feed, you know, information of what was happening. And I'm just wondering with the budget, I, I think it's important for our employees to understand what really happens and not necessarily just the, the negotiating team. So that everyone can be informed, right? And so again, as more of a comment, you know, you guys can think about it, but I think it's, it would be a good idea to communicate that with. Because again, you could send it out on the newsletter, but some people might just like kind of scan through it, but not really understand. So if it could just be a quick, you know, ten-minute intro, this is what happens. This is how it works. I think that would be great. So thank you again and your team.
Yep. Thanks for putting together the budget. I don't think there was anything, well, you know, earlier today, I didn't think there was anything surprising, but I did notice one thing that I just wanted to ask about the the cafeteria fund sort of really dropped in the next year's budget. And is that something we're going to have to watch in the future? It, it looked like it went down about a million and a half and I wasn't sure, because we don't do MIPs for non. Yeah. So I just wasn't sure. Is there something there that like is going to be lurking or not, not a problem? It's just normal ebbs and flows of balance?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I, I think it's normal ebb and flow, but we're also going through significant change right now. With, with our CNS program, the CNS meal service next year is going to be completely different. We've looked, we're looking to see some savings in contractual prices because of our new director, Richie Willem, and, and the action C is taking now at the first board meeting in August, there'll be five, six or seven, I'm not quite sure on the number of contracts coming back for doing self-op food in the district. So those are going out on Monday, due date in July. So we're going to see significant changes. And I'm not concerned about that at this point. I think we'll also see some additional savings next year with lack of a significant contract.
Super exciting. Looking forward to hearing about those changes. Yeah. So the rest of it wasn't, I mean, I didn't see anything surprising in there. I think that, you know, the, the fiscal stabilization, you'd made us very aware that it was coming. We kind of knew the amounts that was coming. So that didn't surprise me at all. I think the how, you know, so more so than even the what is it, it's the how we get to that. I think that's the part that I'm really interested in. So I'm looking forward to reading that draft, sort of being able to provide feedback and then coming back together in August to sort of see how that's going to execute. Because I just think that that'll be really important to make sure that we have to do something. And so we would just want to make the best informed decision with the most amount of reasonable input that we can get and bring everybody along with that. So yeah, that, that's, that's the part that I was most interested in. And so I'm glad to hear that we have that coming. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Rick, very much.
Thank you, Rick. Compared to my neighbor and to a colleague to the north with SACE slides. Oh my God. David, you want to see something that you can't understand? Travel up north a bit. It's in my other neck of the woods, where I own property. It's just, this is amazing compared to what that looks like. It is like, oh my gosh. So, that's all I'm going to say. Thank you. And thank you, Anna, for all your hard work with your staff. Thanks.
Okay, so we can.
Oh, I was just gonna, you know, one thing I did notice with both presentations, I think you added a few slides that we saw tonight that are not in the presentation. So I would just encourage you to take the final that we talked about tonight and make sure that gets uploaded because some people may look at it later. Yeah. I think, Anna, you may have just had one slide that was, but I think he had several.
I missed one, but I talked about all three.
Okay, maybe I'm, I'm.
It is on my presentation, but I didn't show.
Okay, all right.
So we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. It's still coming. So we are on consent with, we pulled seven point four of the Measure U funds disbursement and that's going to be on action. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Close in favor? Thank you. So that brings us to seven point four approval of disbursement of Measure U funds for the twenty four, twenty five school year.
Yes, I need to pull Hoover's and Taft's because of some of the amounts that are not correct. So I need to pull those two and I will bring them back next week. I should, hopefully we can get.
I'm waiting for Hoover's. Yeah.
So. Okay, so we would be approving minus Hoover and Taft?
Correct.
Okay. And now we have a hand raised. We have a speaker's card from Karen Linford. If we can give her speaking access. Karen, you'll have three minutes. You can go ahead and unmute.
Oh, hi. Hi, just wanted to say hello and introduce myself and I, I'm enjoying being at Hoover this year and I know, I want to thank you guys for all the work that you're doing for the district and also I know budgeting is incredibly difficult work. I just often reflect after all the years I've taught how much of a cost it is to not have music in our schools. And I would love to see as many electives as we could have present in our schools. And I think that starting in middle school is so important and we talk a lot about social emotional learning. And certainly arts and sports are a big part of social emotional learning for these kids. I really commend the man that spoke earlier about his need for tutoring and access for his daughter. And I, I see a lot of that at Hoover that I feel that these kids really deserve something that they can grab onto and be involved with. And you know, there's been so much data, which I'm sure you've heard over and over again about the, the effect of music on brain development and test scores and, and all of that. And that's, that's, we all know about that. But I think this is also a huge part of the larger picture and being part of something larger than ourselves. And I just, I just wanted to speak out because I've been doing this a long time and I really appreciate the opportunity to be a part of something at Redwood, in Redwood City and my local community. And I taught at Menlo for fourteen years and I can tell you that I saw a lot of kids there that could afford to do music outside of school. And I see this as, I guess I see this as kind of an equity issue that I feel like I want all our kids to have all those opportunities that my former students at Menlo School had. So I just wanted to, to say hello and gratitude for all that you do. And this was really interesting. I've never listened to a board meeting before. So this, this is a, this is a first for me and I've learned a lot and have a lot of gratitude for all the work that, that people do in this district.
Thank you so much, Karen. Thanks for sitting through our meeting too. Appreciate it.
No worries.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Were there any comments on this item? It's an action item, so we need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve without Hoover and Taft.
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
Reports from board members and superintendent who would like to start?
It's graduation season, so I went to, you know, the graduations at Clifford, Taff and Kennedy Middle School, which included our by literacy recognition, which was mentioned earlier in the in the LCAP presentation. And then on Monday, the Garner Center, I guess, had put together a round table on belonging and particularly for the transition from, you know, middle school to high school and how kids can feel belonging there, especially kids that are in our underrepresented populations and how they make that transfer. So it was really interesting to have sort of practitioners. Dr. Baker was there, you know, and many people from the cabinet were there, mixed together with, you know, professors and academics that are not necessarily in the classroom. Some of them weren't even in education as a field. And just sort of getting those differing opinions in here, you know, here's some thoughts and stuff and ideas that you want.
Yeah, I'll start with the belonging workshop. One of the things I found interesting was one of the professors who just knew so much about the research around belonging, you know, he spoke on the panel and that was kind of interesting to hear from him. But I appreciate it. We, we had the strongest showing of all the school districts. We had more than a table full. So.
They've been working very closely with, you know, our community schools.
Yeah, no, it, it really shows and I certainly appreciate their partnership with us, right? And all they're doing. So anyway, that was a good way to spend the morning. And then I was able to go to Garfield graduation and it was really memorable. Lupe's husband actually sat on the stage and he did speak. And they had a chair for Lupe with some of her favorite things on it. It was really, well, you were there with me, right? No, who was there with me? Gosh.
Oh, Michelle.
Michelle was, yeah, thank you. So Michelle was, who was also very close colleagues with, with Lupe. It was, it was a very, you know, really nice ceremony and they, they give out so many awards to so many students. It went on and on. It was actually, it was great to see so many students recognized. And then I went to the Roosevelt Promotion Ceremony. And then finally, I just wanted to mention that we did have a Redwood City 20, I mean, Redwood City Together retreat, or it wasn't a retreat, but it was a three day, three hour meeting today. And Dr. Baker and Dr. Gernstein from Stanford actually led us through a strategic planning exercise. And then we're going to be doing some more work there. Really trying to come up with some collective data goals and measurements that we can use as a collective, which is a little more complicated than just us as a school district because we've got the city and the county and nonprofits and healthcare providers and all of that. So anyway, thank you for all the, he's been doing so much work on that. It's, it's, it's truly incredible. And, and I do feel like the conversations we had today, there's just a lot of opportunity for how do we help our youth and families that then in turn will absolutely be supporting our academics in the school. So thank you. And I have a few things that if people are interested in it. And then Wendy, I'm going to talk with you after they had a, as an employer, you can, and they have some suggestions on where we can do some job postings and stuff. So there might be a few new things. You probably already are doing them at some of these, some of these places, but anyway.
Right, that's it.
Graduation season, went to graduations at Roosevelt, North Star and Roy Cloud, all three of which were very hot. One of which there was a very sweet girl in the front row who was trying desperately to not pass out. And it, 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 it does have me wonder about whether the district could possibly provide temporary shade structures because these were all outside on fields. So it's beautiful, it's gorgeous, wonderful lighting for the photography. But probably not in the right spirit of things to have students keeling over either. So it's just, if that's possible for us to arrange next year for graduations, that might be a thoughtful thing that we could do.
The other thing that we, I brought up with some of the principals is, you know, McKinley has that gorgeous auditorium and we used to do the graduations there. It's air conditioned. We just need to, you know, calendar them out. The other piece, I need to talk to our, my colleague and see if we could use Carrington Hall also for some of our schools and don't, we'll pay for the custodian, but not for the, I don't want to pay for the rent. You know what they charge us for. Don't want to pay.
You're gonna have to bat your eyelashes, John.
Because I know, I know, I know at least North Star, I don't know about MIT, but they've gone over to the Carrington Hall because they can walk over there.
You know what, what I've been told, it's, it's so expensive.
It is expensive.
I'm going to talk to Crystal. Can we just waive that? And we'll definitely pay for the custodial because that definitely will need to happen, but waive the.
Anyway, we're getting into it.
I know.
If we could get some even, that'd be one option. Another option would be like to temporary shade structure tent or something. But yeah, anyhow. Wonderful graduations. Had a number of discussions with various parties about AI in education, trying to follow up on an action item that John has given me to see if we can drag some vendors in here to present us with options for AI tutoring the like. The high level bit is, gosh, AI state of the art is advancing really, really quickly to the point where there was a meaningful advance in the state of the art this morning with the launch of Claude 1, 3.5 Sonnet, beating a bunch of the AI benchmarks and some of the sample videos that they give to showcase how powerful these AI models are, are students remitting like homework and teachers putting together lesson plans and the like. So there's, we're, we're on the one hand, kind of squarely within some of the use cases they're imagining. On the other hand, a lot of these AI companies mainly interface with the world by offering APIs versus offering, you know, ready to go kits for K to eight districts. They're a couple of years away from being that level of maturity, but some very interesting discussions. We'll, we'll get some more.
Graduations, I attended Henry Ford, Adelante and McKinley. All very different, very hot too, of course, we, you know, we talked about that. But very, very nice. It was good to see obviously the promotions and the eighth graders moving on to high school. And then as far as other meetings, I was also a part of the Redwood City Together, which was great. And I do appreciate Dr. Baker's just many hours of involvement because that surely is a collaboration with, you know, Stanford and Redwood City Together and all the partners. So when, when we talk about partnerships, I mean, I always say hats off to Redwood City. So I really appreciate it. And that's it.
I attended a very hot Orion promotion.
Stayed in the shade as long as we.
And I know that they're actually discussing moving it into the morning for next year too. That's another option. And then I attended a very nice, cool Hoover graduation. They're beautiful, new gym. And then we had a Citizens Bond Oversight Committee meeting recently. Among other things, the committee reviewed the facilities master plan process with Van Pelt and they were architects from the list that we had recently approved. QKA. Were they all from QK? I thought there was, okay.
Everything's been discussed. I was at a lot of the same items.
We were at Roosevelt together, but we were in the shade.
Yeah.
Great. Any correspondence? Quiet, yeah. Okay. Other business suggested items for future agenda? Changes to the board meeting calendar, we have a meeting, one meeting left.
One meeting.
Yep. Excellent. So that brings us to eight 59 and 25 seconds. Somebody wants to make a motion to.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second in.
All those in favor?
Aye.